............
All right, we'll try getting the show on the road and see what happens. Are we ready? Good morning. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, January 23rd. There are 14 council members in one vacant seat. There are three meetings a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and we are ready to begin by calling the roll.
Burnson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Padilla, really, Thomas, Wornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 12 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Let us begin with the first item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And the resolutions are approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there's a request on item number 18 to receive and file that matter.
All right, is there any objection to receiving and filing item 18? Seeing none, it's received and filed.
And also a request on item number 20 from Councilmember Hernandez's office to continue that for one week to January 30th.
All right, item 20 is gonna be continued for one week, if anyone's here on that.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, item number one is a Budget and Finance Committee report and ordinance first reading.
All right, members of the council, you ready? Item number one. Anybody wish to be heard? Open the roll on item number one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Next item.
Items two through five are also public hearing items. Those items, the hearing should be open and continue the hearing and ordinance to February 13th.
All right, we have no cards on those, so we'll open the hearings and continue the whole business until February 13th.
Item number six is a public convenience or necessity for alcoholic sales on Council District Two. A motion is required from the floor to deny the application.
Yes, I'd like to deny the application. It is without prejudice, but we should deny it at this time.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Open the roll on Mr. Wax's motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And I want to thank the officers who took time to be here today on this.
Okay, next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 17, item seven, eight, nine, all have two reports on the files. Do you wish to hold those?
Madam President, I'm happy to move items seven A and eight A, which are the Budget and Finance Committee reports on those respective matters.
All right, and I need a motion on item nine. I know, I'm not up to that yet, hold on. No, I will in a second. We're gonna do it special anyway, we have a lot of cards. Item nine, do we have a motion on item nine?
On item nine, Madam Chair, I'll move the CED Committee's report.
Okay.
What, item nine?
Which one? Nine? Nate, which one are you calling special?
Item nine.
Item nine, all right, item nine is called special. Hold on, open the roll on seven and eight, let's get those taken care of. Seven A and eight A. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Nine's been called special, 13's been called special, 14. Any other specials through item 17? Item 17 for an amendment. It's Mr. Savarnich. Sorry? 15? All right, item 15. That doesn't leave us a lot, does it? Okay. All right. Let me just make sure we have cards on 13, which was called special, 14, which was called special. So that leaves us 10, 11, 12, and 16. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 18 through 34, with the exception of 18, and so it should be 19 through 34, and item number 20 has already been acted on.
All right, we have cards, let's see, hold on. Okay, all right, so we have, I'm sorry, we're, this is...
Items 19 through 34.
All right, we have cards on item 30, so we're gonna call that special. All right, members of the council, we have before us, well, first of all, is there anybody from the public, who I haven't heard from yet, who wants to be heard on 19, 21 through 29? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed on those items, and we are ready to vote on items 19 and 21 through 29.
Madam President, item 23, I move item 23B.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right, Maria, hold on. All right, Mr. Padilla has moved on 23, that it's item 23B.
And I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez, seconds. Right, and so this would be 19, 21 through 29, and 31 through 34. Okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, those are approved. We need fourth with on 24 and 27.
And 32, Madam Chair.
And 23, and 32. 31 and 32.
And 34.
And 34. And 27, now I got 27 and 24 already, and 23. Send them off, fourth with.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, now, I believe that takes us back to the specials, and our first special was item number nine.
Called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, are we just going to have 15 daycare centers for seniors? I just wanted to raise a question, I'm sure Ms. Smith can answer this, and Mr. Hernandez also. I just, for good or bad, I went to visit a senior citizen center, Saynon, in my district, Saturday, to swear in the offices, and they asked me, "What about us?" Then we got four or five in my district, and if we're just gonna fund one, and one of them served my district and Mr. Furis' district, they said, "What happens to us? And is there not enough money to go around, or can we have everybody get a smaller portion? What can we do, if anything, to help the seniors who were not, be successful in this bidding process?"
Councilmen, hopefully, many organizations will apply for these services, and we have been notifying agencies all year of funding opportunities. We will continue to provide that information to organizations.
Okay, now my question is simply, is there a likelihood, if at all, that, because seniors still gonna be needing some kind of services, that we'll be able to help them, maybe with some state, or federal, or any programs on the horizon that you could perhaps see or envision, or one that we could create here to help them?
Councilmen, it is our intent with this RFP not to reduce services, but to expand services. Daycare is one area that we are not providing on a city-wide basis.
Okay, so fine, so the other programs won't be affected?
No, they will not.
Aye, aye, sir. Ma'am?
Thank you. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, the reason I rise is, as I read the report, I almost, I thought it was written backwards, and I wanted to make sure I clarify a point. When we talk about adult daycare centers that we're gonna be establishing, 15 of them, this particular recommendation is basically limited in terms of funding from the block grant, and then it's being planned to hopefully be able to fill the gap through the general fund. And what I wanted to remind my colleagues about is that the city of Los Angeles should have a commitment to all its seniors, and that commitment should be fulfilled through the general fund. The reality is, the block grant should supplement that commitment, and the way it's written, it sounds like the general fund's gonna supplement the commitment of the block grant. And I'm trying to make people aware that the intent of the block grant is to serve as a supplement to a city program, and not for the general fund to supplement the block grant. So I'm making that distinction, because I think that we don't wanna be in a position where we're saying we're funding, let's say, seniors in more affluent areas out of the general fund, and we're using public tax dollars for that purpose, that are dedicated to the city, and then seniors in poorer communities, we're gonna use tax dollars given, returned to us by the federal government. That is not the intent of the block grant. And so I wanted to make that distinction, because when we come to the general fund funding of this portion, there should be a clear understanding that we, as a city, have a commitment to our elderly, and elderly daycare is important. By approving what's before us today, we are approving, basically, the beginning of a direction of establishing 15 adult daycare centers, and we know that the general fund's gonna have to help in order to make that a reality.
All right, there is nobody else. Item nine is before us. Open the roll on item nine. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
That's all right. 12 ayes.
That's approved.
We have that, the fourth with.
Yes, fourth with on that, yes. Okay, I believe the next item is item 13, which was called special by Mr. Burnson, and in addition, we have a lot of people who want to be heard on this. All right, there was a public hearing, well, so, Mr. Burnson, you were up first, and we do have...
Yes, members of the council, what is before us today is strictly an up or down vote on the override. There is an amendment, which I proposed, and Mr. Hernandez has seconded, referring, which will be separate from the ordinance, because that's the only way we can legally do it, and we'll, I'm asking that that be sent to Plum, so we can tinker with some of the, of the things that are provided for, and the costs of the housing fees, which may be a problem. In fact, I did vote for the SNAP ordinance, I advised Jackie at the time that I thought it needed some adjusting, I still think it does, but what is before us today is strictly up or down on the veto. So with that, and the committee did recommend unanimously a approval or override of the veto, so I would ask for a, what do we, how many cards do we have on this, Ruth? How about a 10-minute public hearing?
We have one against, one unidentified, and one, two, three, four in favor.
Okay, well, all of those in favor, I would suggest, you know, you really, because I think the will of the council is going to be to adopt the committee report, which was for override, but we will hear whoever wants to be heard. I will move a 10-minute public hearing.
All right, I do now have four council members who want to speak, and if it's all right with you, members of the council, we're gonna first hear from the public. Let me start with those who are, well, I'm gonna, since one of these is not identified for or against, I'm gonna have to do these just in somewhat random order. Let's start with Mr. Walsh, who is against the proposal, and then Chris Shabel, or Shabel, which is the one not identified, and then we'll go from there to Mr. McQuiston, Reverend Carr, Ms. Arkin, and Mr. Linton. Mr. Walsh.
You know, originally, I was against this proposal, till I heard that Richard Reardon vetoed it. Now that I heard that Richard Reardon vetoed this, I am 100% in favor of the override. Now, someone said about John Walsh, if Richard Reardon came out against cannibalism, John Walsh would be in favor of cannibalism. That's how much I think that lame duck Dick Reardon needs to be, have his ears pinned back today. I'd just like to point out that although I'm in favor of this project, the ridership on the subway is down 20%, while the ridership on the buses, rapid bus, is up 20%.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, thank you. Chris Shabel. All right, Jim McQuiston. To be followed by Reverend Jeff Carr, Lois Arkin, Joe Linton.
Good morning. I'm Jim McQuiston of the East Hollywood Community Association. All of you were given our position on the veto override yesterday, and I hope you've all have read it. We live in the area, and we believe that this is aimed at aliens. It is racist, and it is demagogic. We think it needs a lot of work, and we hope that we don't have to get the federal government in here to straighten it out. We don't want to see that happening. We please want to have this sent back, as the mayor suggested, to the Planning Commission, and have it extensively reworked, so that we don't drive out all the churches, other than the Catholic Church, and so that we don't drive out everyone who owns automobiles, and that we can get some adequate public services, parks, police stations, fire stations. We want the public safety to be observed. This seems to think that aliens don't deserve to live, and we think that that is a wrong position for the city council.
Reverend Carr?
Yes, good morning, council members. I would like, I'm Reverend Jeff Carr from the Brzee Foundation, and we are part of the Parks First Coalition. I'd like to ask all those who are part of the Parks First Coalition to stand with me. I just want to say thank you to Councilman Burnson, and to Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Misakowski for their support in the Plum Committee. We've worked for over two years on this issue to try and get this zoning ordinance in our neighborhood to improve the quality of life in our neighborhood. And I would say all of us, I would just say as a point to our last speaker, I don't know anyone who's an alien.
When it came to council before the end of the year, we and the community and the Planning Department very much touted this plan as innovative, coming up with the recognition that in a transit station corridor, there was going to be density, in an area that there already was, high density. And this community looked to say, if we accept some increased density, some increased development, we have to get something in return that values our community, values the quality of life that we need to improve in our community, and takes back areas that are underutilized, our concrete or asphalt, and turns them into parks and turns them into neighborhood spaces. That's what this plan does. It does it by establishing some fees, some fees that I think were reasonable and that were the subject of the mayor's veto. But members of the council, I think we need to move forward with what the community asked for, with what the Planning Department, the Planning Commission supported. And I have no problem with Mr. Burnson's amendment. Mr. Burnson's amendment, which will go to committee, is to say, "Let's make sure we've got a good correlation between fees in the city and other things we're attempting to do with them that are being imposed." But at this point, I think it would be a very strong signal to have this council reaffirm the community's efforts, the community's work, and unanimously vote to override the veto.
Thank you, councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
When I also rise in strong support of overriding the veto, and I'd like to ask the community members who are here on this issue to please stand. And I want to commend you for being here and expressing your voice. It's extremely important that you do that at this time. Thank you very much. Members of the council, we all stood and said positive things about this item when Councilmember Goldberg was present. And it is a plan, and it is a positive plan, and it's dealing with our transit corridors, and it's providing for many of the different needs that we need to do as a planned-out city. And it's something that's been lacking in a lot of our plans. And so, again, I second the motion introduced by Mr. Burnson, because we were going to be looking at a citywide issue in terms of creating the nexus for open space and the nexus for housing. At the same time, you need to understand that the spirit in which we initially passed this item has not changed. And the necessity for continuing this kind of planning has not changed. And I just ask for unanimous support of the community that is impacted by this plan and has worked hard to make this plan something that will make a difference in the quality of life where they live. Part of the problem in our city is that we're not the same. Different parts of the city have been planned more carefully than other parts of the city. And economics have forced people to live along certain corridors. So again, I believe that this is a plan of action that is positive and will make a difference in that community. And we have to figure out how to make it work, and we have to continue in that direction. And that direction includes overriding the veto that's before us at this time.
Thank you, councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Didn't the mayor exercise his authority as the mayor, chief executive, the branch of the city, when he vetoed this? Is that correct? Okay. Mr. Burnson, what's happened since we last visited this matter before us that caused you to support 13A, and what does 13A really represent, Mr. Burnson?
Well, being as you asked, I was going to do that in my closing remarks, but it, when, you know, I was happy to support this because I think the community really worked hard with the council office to put this together. And it is a great plan. But the problem is, as great a plan as it is, if it doesn't have the mechanism to make it work, it's not going to benefit the community. So we need to make some changes, some minor tuning, on how the fees are collected so that we can get the money for these parks. As it is right now, I have some concerns that nobody's going to build market-rate housing in the area because of the excessive fees. And that's the only, that's the only basis of money for the ordinance.
So what happens is that you're going to kill the goose that lays the golden egg. First of all, we need affordable housing. There's no doubt about it. The excessive fees will deter anyone from wanting to invest in a project where they have to set aside that kind of money for the open space. Now, I would think that in the case of the hospital, I think that's what we're talking about also, to be more specific, that they talked about a childcare center as well? I understand you can deal with it in committee, but, but there's a ways, for the purpose of the public knowing, the, in that particular case, I see no reason why the hospital can't designate an area within the hospital for the purpose of saying, "I have a childcare center, donate to the open space, you take care of two birds with one stone, it's called, reach it in agreement." It's simple. And if that's the case, you have to veto, vote to override the veto for the purpose of accomplishing that as a goal, then, of course, that could be the action that I would take. And how long will this take for you to get it back to before us, Mr. Burnson? Soon as you get the information, you get it back as quick as you can. So, I know, but you'll have it back soon. 30 days, okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Wax.
Your prayers have been answered.
Mr. Wax.
Mr. President, members of council, I think the mayor's point on the fees is a valid issue in terms of it impacting housing. But far overweight by that is the process by which this was presented to us. And if we mean what we say about community-based planning, if we mean what we say about community-based economic development, if we mean what we say about going towards community-based government in which people in the community, residents and businesses alike, and all of the stakeholders come together in the way they have with this program, then we have to override this veto. I thought that the process by which this was developed was exactly what we need more of in Los Angeles. And each neighborhood will do it differently. Each neighborhood will, you know, each neighborhood will reflect the diversity of interests and concerns in their area. But you have two choices in this city. It's either the top-down all the time telling you, "Here's what's good for you," or it's involving the people in the community to say, "Here's what we want to do, here's what our priorities are, we're willing to work for it, we're willing to come together." I would override this veto for nothing else, that I want to validate the process by, and the people who participated in bringing it before us. Mr. Burnson has found a compromise here that will enable us to perhaps deal with the one legitimate concern, and I think it is legitimate, but still validate and encourage not only this, but other neighborhoods to try to do what you've done. And I think you ought to be congratulated for your efforts.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I think it's been said, and I think the plan is a very, very good plan, a very ambitious one. We hope it works. We've got to make it work because we've got to give it the ammunition to make it work. And there are a number of things that need to be done. We have to adjust the fees so that there will be an investment in some market-rate housing in the area, as well as low cost, so that that will help fund the open space and parks that this plan proposes. Second of all, there needs to be a provision that low-cost housing should not be built all by itself. All market-rate housing should include a percentage of low-cost housing, so that it's intertwined. That's the way it works, and that's the way it works properly. So that's going to be part of the amendment. We're also going to look at the possibility of some mixed-use benefits, because the commercial on the lower floors and residential on the upper floors are beneficial, and we're going to try to make this thing work. But I think that it is a good ordinance. I think that there's one other, one other element that needs to be done, and we can't deal with that here. But I've spoken to Jackie a couple of times about it. I believe that she's going to, at my suggestion, introduce at the state legislature some amendments to the Quinby ordinance, to the Quinby law, that will provide that some of the funds that are generated citywide be used outside of the generation area if they have adequate parks, and be used in some of the areas that don't have, that were there before Quinby. So we've got to find funding to make this work. It's got to economically be sound, and these are the things that we're going to address in committee. So hopefully, we'll get this back as quick as we can. I think the mayor also appreciated the ordinance, except for the fear that I also had, which was discouraged, it would discourage development of market-rate housing. But I want to thank everybody who came down, and I want to say that even while she's in Sacramento, Mrs. Goldberg is still working on this with the Quinby adjustment, which could give us some major funding into the inner-city areas that were there without parks before Quinby was developed. So I would urge an aye vote, hopefully a unanimous vote.
All right. That, hang on, we haven't voted yet. All right, the first, the vote, the motion before us is the committee report, which is to override the veto. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is a unanimous vote. The veto is overridden. Yes, your motion. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Burnson's motion will be referred to the Planning Committee, so that'll come up at a later time. Yes, forthwith on that, by all means, thank you. Okay, the next item before us is item 14. We have a number of cards on item 14. Mr. Hernandez, do you want to say something first?
Madam Chair, I'd also ask for--
There has been a public hearing.
But I would ask for a 10-minute public hearing also on this item. Members of the council, and if I may take my first three minutes at this time on this particular item. You know, we have a paid staff on the city that does a lot of work, and whether it be in the Planning Department or the Building and Safety Department. And I was shocked in committee when I found out that their reference of information is a dictionary. And I didn't know if it was Webster's Dictionary they used, or Simplified Version Dictionary they used. But building and safety basically use that as their reference to determine the use of the space in this particular building. And for me, from my perspective, we have codes that basically designate a difference between public storage for purposes of storage of items and warehousing for purposes of operation, and what is acceptable in light manufacturing communities, as well as what's acceptable in residential communities. And so for some reason, building and safety took the easy way out. Now, planning based their information on building and safety's information, but it was shocking in Plum to hear that they used the dictionary, when there are other standards established at the federal level that they could have used. And I'm sure the feds didn't use a dictionary to get to their response. Now, we're going to be asked today to basically accept that simplified version and set a precedent, because it's the first time someone was pushing that envelope. And I tend to disagree with building and safety, and I tend to disagree with the mode that they chose to define the difference. And luckily, they don't set policy. We do. And we need to understand what this decision is about. As clarity came about in terms of the debate, it happened because of the public input. Public storage did push the envelope. They are planning a warehousing operation, and we need to set limitations to that operation. My understanding is building and safety is going to choose to continue the path that they, as to how they define the use. And then if they do that, and when it gets to the zoning administrator and the Area Planning Commission, we have the right at that time to 245 it, and then we can deal with the policy decisions that have to happen. I was hoping that logic would tell our department head, and I'm holding that department head responsible for this decision, it's very upsetting to me, to basically look at different definitions established for use of space. And again, I guess they think the dictionary simplified version is the best way to go in defining that definition. I just thought I'd make it public. I asked for a 10-minute hearing, and that's what's before us at this time, and I'm sure my colleagues will add to that.
All right. Ms. Misakowski, you're up next, or do you want to have a hearing first?
Hearing.
All right, we're, as soon as I find them. Against the proposal, we'll hear from first, that's Dale Neal, to be followed by the following four people in favor of the proposal. Well, I'll call them after, Mr. Neal. Go ahead.
Madam President, members of the city council, my name is Dale Neal. I'm with Latham and Watkins, representing public storage. You should each have a letter from our office dated January 23rd. We submitted it earlier in front of you. In the letter, we respectfully request that you disapprove the Plum Committee report. I think that report has been mooted by the report of the Department of Building and Safety that you have before you, which addresses the issues that Plum Committee was concerned about. And as is clear from the report of the Department of Buildings and Safety, the public storage Eagle Rock facility is in full compliance with the code. As the department points out, the facility meets the definition of storage building for household goods. There are no operational limits in the code for storage facilities. There is no evidence suggesting that the Eagle Rock facility is being used for commercial purposes, and there is no basis to issue in order to comply, to delay the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, or to take the actions suggested by the Plum Committee. So with all, for all those reasons, we would urge that you deny and disapprove the Plum Committee report and adopt the report of the Department of Building and Safety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Montalegre, followed by Ms. Mines, Mr. Gieler, and Ms. Searola.
Good morning, Andrew Montalegre, a member of the Glassell Park Improvement Association, and also a member of the Planning Department Construction Service Center. One item which I'd like to point out in terms of the definition of warehousing and public storage, the code is regarded as a permissive code. This is the way it's trained, this is the way it's by experience, and this is the way other zoning engineers and planners are taught to regard it. If the code is silent on an issue such as warehouse operations, then it's not allowed. This is a practice, I have not been able to seen that codified, but as a practice, if it's not specified, it's not allowed, and projects should be denied. And I think this is one case where it was missed, that the silence of the code does not allow the warehousing to be there. Thank you.
All right, Betsy Mines.
Good morning, my name is Betsy Mines. I'm president of the Glassell Park Improvement Association, and I was here before when we asked that this matter be referred to Plum. And we'd like to thank the Plum Committee for making a appropriate decision. I would also like to point out that all of this is, I am a member of Councilwoman Jackie Goldberg's district. We do not have a member sitting at your table this morning. Those candidates who are running for office in Council District 13, as Mr. Wax, have spoken extensively on the value of neighborhood councils and relying on what the neighborhood wants and needs. We are here saying that this facility, which is a warehouse, is in Glassell Park, Mr. Neal, not in Eagle Rock. At least we know what neighborhood we're in.
Well, could I ask you to address the project itself? Let's stay on the issue here.
The project itself is a warehouse. People cannot bring things and take things out in the part of the building that is three stories tall, empty on the inside, and which is filled with boxes that people fill outside of the facility and have transported there on trucks. We oppose the facility use as a warehouse.
Thank you. Mike Gieler.
Hello. I was at the Plum Hearing Committee, and I heard Attorney Dale Neal, the public storage attorney, say that this is an issue where they're trying to change the rules after the fact. Actually, more appropriately, it's a case of interpreting the rules properly, not only for the business interest, but for the community interest. And then also, too, we should understand that when terms, the code provides, when there's, when it's silent, to look at common understanding of terms, not only dictionaries. And then also, to look to the technical words. Look to the technical words. Interpret is usually understood by persons in proficient professions or businesses, which they relate. Why not use the business's own self-description? I have here, in the yellow pages of year 2000 and year 2001, they say, "We store," that means they store the containers for you in their one-large-room warehouse, and that they say, "We store our containers," and they describe it, quote, "as a, in, we store the containers in our safe warehouse you know and trust." Why not use that term? Let them describe it. Ironically, they didn't use, in their marketing, they used common understanding, but they didn't use it when they applied for the permit. Why didn't the permit say-- Why didn't the permit say warehouse use? It was obvious from the Plum Committee that they believed, and I believe they even have a superior authority over the Building and Safety Commission, as they set policy, that this was a warehouse. Why didn't they do this? Okay, and then also, on the contract, it said that there is no knowledge of, they know what's in the container. It says on the contract, "We obtained the contract. There's no knowledge of what is in the container to determine whether it's household or business goods." And then finally, or I have two points, one more. What is very important is the purpose of why are not warehouses allowed in a C2 zone? All the characteristics, Building Safety did not look anything other than what was in the building. But what about all the characteristics that help describe what a warehouse is? And what are those characteristics? Trucks, forklifts, loading docks, movement of containers, industrial activities, in and out of this? All those impacts exist, negative impacts. 20 to 50 feet away from a park and pool that I work at, where I swim with my child, that's why I'm here. And finally, as you determine that this is a warehouse use not in code, within the code, or permitted in the code, don't be afraid, as you were in the Charter 245 for jurisdiction. You don't have that. You don't have that city liability. Here, you have Section 1226A, three that states vested rights shall end if there is a change of use which violate the zoning code. This warehouse in the C2 zone violates the zoning code. Thank you.
Paula Sorolla.
Hi, I'm, hello, I'm Paula Sorolla. I'm a resident of Glassell Park. I'm also a professional planner in the area of economic development. Since the beginning of this project, the community has complained that this is a warehouse. In the two appeals before the Building and Safety Commission and in front of the Planning Commission, the community gave the professional definition of distinguishing what's the, between a warehouse and self-storage. A warehouse, according to the federal standard industrial classification system, which is used by professional planners, says that a warehouse generally handles goods in containers, such as boxes and barrels, using equipment such as forklifts, pallets, and racks. It further goes on to distinguish that self-storage is an establishment that is engaged primarily in renting or leasing space for self-storage. These establishments provide secure space, rooms, compartments, lockers, containers, or outdoor space where clients can store and retrieve their goods. The difference is direct access versus indirect access. And what we have here in the warehouse in Eagle Rock is indirect access. It is a warehouse. And I appreciate that the Plum Committee was the first public body to listen to this professional definition. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and we have item 14 before us. Ms. Misakowski is next.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I think it behooves reiterating some of the issues that were raised by the speakers. What this is, is that self-storage building that was built and has been under contention in the 13th Council District. When it came before us before, on the question of whether or not we would take control of it and determine whether or not an error had been made, there were a lot of other issues involved. There was the issue, is it a warehouse or is it self-storage? Should it have been there? Should it have been under site plan review? A lot of other issues, and I think what we have now focused on is the issue of what is the use, and has Building and Safety Department appropriately determined its use, determined how it is used, and can it and should it issue a certificate of occupancy? What you have before you is a recommendation of the Planning Committee, saying that we still had questions, and we referred that back to the department and to the Building and Safety Commission, and asked that a final certificate of occupancy be held until these issues were readdressed. Members of the council, there's no question in my mind that a portion of this building is a warehouse, and a warehouse is not allowed in a commercial zone. How do we know that it's a warehouse? We heard someone read from a Yellow Page advertising this site, saying, "Use our warehouse." They called it a warehouse. How do we know that it's a warehouse? It uses trucks and forklifts. Despite the fact that Building and Safety says they looked to the dictionary, as was just indicated, the federal government has some very different definitions. General warehousing and storage is talked about, an establishment that generally handles goods in containers, such as boxes, barrels, or drums, using equipment such as forklifts, pallets, and racks. That's what's done here. Self-storage, which we all know, which is allowed in commercial zone, is in an industry comprised primarily in renting or leasing space for self-storage. These establishments provide secure space, rooms, compartments, lockers, containers, where clients can store and retrieve their goods. That happens in part of this building. That doesn't happen in the other half. I think it's clear that part of this building, as it is now utilized, should not be given a certificate of compliance, because it is not in compliance with what a self-storage allowed in a commercial zone should be. Another thing, I think many of us have self-storages, and when you use and rent a self-storage space, they have time limits. They don't want people coming in in the middle of the night, so normally, they lock down tight at 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock. This one operates 24 hours a day, bringing in their forklifts, bringing in their own equipment as they manage it as a warehouse. I saw the Building and Safety letter on this, which was just submitted, and they actually, Planning Committee had asked, "Are there other self-storage facilities like this multi-height?" And what we had is that there are a number of other multi-height self-storages, but this wasn't a height limit question. This was a, "Are there others where in that volume of height, they are operated like this one, like a warehouse?" I don't think Building and Safety has adequately addressed that issue. I ask that we adopt this report of Plum, but still instruct the department to bring this matter to the commission. Again, not issue the certificate of compliance until that issue is reviewed as it goes forward to the commission. And I think it's probably fair to say that there are some on the council who are very concerned about that decision, and will look very closely at the Building and Safety Commission action on it, and I dare say that that might be back before the City Council for some consideration. But members of the council, there is not, this has, we talked about changing the rules. The rules have been changed by this company, who, most of us know this company, most of us have seen this company, have buildings in our districts. Self-storage, as this company put forward, has been a commodity that is used and of service to a community. What this building in is, is different. They've changed the rules. They've pushed the envelope, and I think it's appropriate for the City Council to look at that, acknowledge it, and say what they have done is not consistent with our rules.
Mr. Burnson.[1046.15][1046.15](APPLAUSE).
During the time this item was before our Planning Committee, I asked the zoning administrator who had made the approval on this, if the application had said that it was public storage, would he have granted the permit? And he said, yes. I said, if you, if it had stated warehouse, would you have granted the permit? And he said, no. And that's the simple answer right here. That's the bottom line. What was done was a lack of presentation on the part of the applicant as to what the use was going to be for this particular building. And as such, I believe that they are not in compliance with the city's zoning codes, and I believe that we have the ability to not grant a permanent certificate of occupancy. And I think that we've asked the Building and Safety Department to look into this matter, and I think that it also goes without saying that there are a number of potential changes in city ordinance relating to public storage and warehousing that are going to be addressed as a result of this, to make sure this doesn't happen again. Because most public storage does in some way impact residential and other uses, and they have to be contained to certain hours, certain size, and certain type of traffic. So I would urge a unanimous vote of the Planning Committee report, which is to instruct Building and Safety to look into the matter, to not issue a permanent certificate of occupancy until total determinations have been made in this particular case. Thank you.[1162.83][1162.83](APPLAUSE).
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, Building and Safety is before us, and they basically, again, chose to use Webster's Dictionary as their reference. Now, I need you to understand that that was their decision. Since they made that decision, it was supported through a zoning administrator, and then it went through an area planning commission, and then it went through to the Plum Committee. Now Plum had extensive debate on this issue, and we felt that there should be some other standards that should be considered, and that's why we're making the recommendation we're making. And knowing that we set the policies and not Building and Safety, I'd like to ask Building and Safety if they still plan to use the dictionary as a reference point, or are they considering any other reference points in regards to this definition? You heard the question, Mr. Lada, anybody can answer it. You're all Building and Safety.
Somebody needs to answer it, though.
Members of council, Jeff McIntyre with Building and Safety. We did, after the Plum Committee, we were instructed to refer with the Department of City Planning, as well as the City Attorney's Office, and we looked at the definition that was provided to us at the Plum Committee meeting. The City Attorney, as indicated in our report, has typically instructed us to refer to the dictionary when words and other phrases are undefined in the municipal code. With respect to the definitions that were provided to us, the first thing that jumps out at us is that the self-storage term exists nowhere within the municipal code.
Well, let me just point out to you that Mr. Hernandez's question was, are you going to now consider using something other than the dictionary for the purpose of defining warehouse or storage?
Warehouse, warehouse operations.
Warehouse. So that's a sort of yes or no question.
We did consider that, and if we are instructed to do again, we will consider that.
So, but right now, what you're saying, you're sticking to the dictionary?
We're sticking to the language of the municipal code, which has in the past, and the City Attorney's Office has typically instructed us to...
But members of the council, Building and Safety is trying to set policy for the entire council. We'll let them go through their procedure. I just wanted the council to be aware, so that when it comes back to us, the Charter clearly states, "We set policy," not them. And I think we wanted to follow the recommendations of the Plum Committee, so that the council has the opportunity to review this issue at its proper moment. And I am quite adamant about that, because I don't want Building and Safety to basically set more rules than they're allowed to. And hopefully, they will follow the recommendations of the Plum Committee, and then the council can take the appropriate debate as to how to define this use. I say that because we clearly have a different definition as to what kind of use can go on in commercial zones versus industrial zones. They are now clouding that issue, and that's why I am extremely concerned, because I deal with warehousing operations in my district, as well as storage operations in my district, and I understand the difference.
All right, thank you. Item 14 is now before us. This is the Plum Committee report. A yes vote adopts the committee report. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.[1395.01][1395.01](APPLAUSE). Twelve ayes. That is unanimously adopted.[1399.46][1399.46](APPLAUSE). Forthwith, thank you. I believe our next item is item 17, 15, sorry, 15, you're quite right, item 15. Ms. Misakowski, you called item 15 special.
This is a police department contract with our emergency command and control system. It is the Ninth Amendment to that contract. This is an ongoing contract, and I just rose, I think, excuse me, 15A is on the desk. We had been working with the Police Commission on this, and in fact, Commissioner Dean Hansel was working very closely, and wanted to make sure that as we entered this next phase, that the contract be amended to include a clause which is mostly referred to in the industry as the most favored nation, which basically says that although we are negotiating for contracts for the delivery of these services, that if this company, TRW, which is obviously a substantial company, offers similar services in this area to another corporate entity or any other entity in the area at a lower rate, that the City of Los Angeles automatically is entitled to that lower rate as well. And through the efforts of Commissioner Hansel and the City Attorney, that was agreed upon, and this motion amends that contract to allow that particular clause to be there, so that we will always be assured that as this might go out for a few more years, that if there's a lower rate offered, we then are entitled to it. So I would ask that we move 15A, as well as the recommendation of the Public Safety.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Check.
Yes, I certainly think that we need to deal with the fact that we have a company that's been doing work for us and hasn't been paid for it in quite some time, but I would like to ask staff some questions in terms of the original cost estimate for this contract, for the dispatch center's construction piece of our Prop M project. So what was the original cost estimate? What is the completion date for both facilities, the construction of the buildings? And then, when will the technology and the dispatch staff to operate actually be in the facilities? Those three questions, please. Let's see, can you... If you could hold my time, Madam President.
Okay. Madeline Rackley from Oars.
I can't hear you.
Oh, my name is Madeline Rackley. I'm from Oars. I believe we can answer your questions for you today regarding the schedule for the building.
Could you start with the first question in terms of...
Yes, okay, and can you repeat that for me, please?
What was the original cost estimate of building the two facilities? We entered into a contract a long time ago. There was a, there were bids. What was the estimate? And if the questions can't be answered today, then I'm going to ask for this to be held.
We can answer that.
(INAUDIBLE).
Yes.
Yeah. But if there's lack of specificity and certainty, then I would appreciate having this held over until tomorrow, so my questions can be answered very thoroughly and very accurately.
What we were wondering, I'm Lieutenant Dan Keith, the acting commanding officer for Emergency Command, Control, Communication System Division. Were you asking about the initial cost for just the buildings themselves, or for the TRW services related to them?
For TRW services.
Okay. Originally, TRW was contracted in '96 for a five-point...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, originally, TRW was contracted in '96 for a cost of $5 million to do the study and design, and then the next phase of implementation was about another $5.7 million. So it would have been an $11 million roughly, original budget, and that's what they were working on when the department opted to change direction for the off-the-shelf technology, which resulted in Change Order 10. This change order will bring the total for the TRW participation to about $16 million. So there is a little bit of extra cost, but it's still within budget, within the bond funds of it.
Yeah, well, I would call $5 million a lot more than a little bit. But in other words, changes to the technology after the project started caused changes in the construction of the facilities?
Not in the construction of the facility itself, but in the design of the systems and the dual dispatch center concept, and some of the microwave, the technology involved in putting it in with the off-the-shelf technology. The original design was for us to upgrade what we already have in a custom configuration. We already had a custom CAD, computer-aid dispatch system. We were just going to upgrade it. The off-the-shelf gives us a much more robust system with the opportunity to put a lot more extra enhancements to it, but it required redesigning significantly from the original game plan. And that's what the extra cost is for, is redesigning, obtaining the equipment, the off-the-shelf equipment.
And in terms of the completion dates for the buildings themselves, and when staff will be in there with the technology up and running in the dispatch centers?
Those dates have not changed. We have always planned to have the Metro Dispatch Center available and staffed in July of 2002, and the...
But I'm asking when the actual building will be finished?
Oh, the building itself, the Metro building will be done by the end of March this year, just about two months from now.
And then it will sit vacant for two years, waiting for the technology to go in?
There will be work being done in the building. No, it will not be operational, but it does, we have always planned an 18-month period to put the infrastructure in place, the interior, the consoles, the fiber optics, the 911 phone lines. These things all have to be designed and coordinated and installed and tested, and to make sure that it all works. But we have always planned an 18-month period for that, even from the beginning.
For the building to be done, and then to... For the building to be done, and then to put those things in.
Yes. And the same for the Valley Dispatch Center. It will be done in, probably around June, July of this year, and it won't be activated until July or January of 2003.
And some of these changes are dealing with also our contract with Motorola in terms of the off-the-shelf and things that they're working on?
I believe they have bid on some of the off-the-shelf technology, but that's still being evaluated. We haven't made any decisions just yet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hernandez. I'm sorry, Mr. Holden was first. Mr. Holden, you were first. Mr. Hernandez.
I wasn't going to ask any questions until I heard the questioning coming from Council Member Chek. $5 million plus, that's over 33% increase. Fifty police officers. I'm sure Mr. Wax isn't laughing at that statement, but it's 50 police officers. Are you, and as I heard your report, what it sounded like is that the first $5 million we spent on design of a system was wasted.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, not entirely.
Well, it sounds to me that then we spent another $5 million, but because we redesigned the system. You see, you talked about a first phase, then you talked about a second phase, and then you're talking about us redesigning a system, and because of that redesign, it's costing us $5 million more, because we're taking a system off the shelf that we could have taken in the first place.
Well, we are still using many of the elements from the initial report. It isn't completely wasted, but yes, you are right. The change in direction for the enhanced system with the more state-of-the-art technology, there is a cost associated with it. But they were taken out of contingency funds, and we're still within the Prop M funds and budgets. We don't expect to have to ask for any additional money.
I'll stay quiet.
Mr. Holden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to raise a concern as a minority, there's a minority report associated with this with item 15, is that not correct? With Mr. Pacheco was saying that he has a different view on this. Ms. Mizakowski, is she around?
Sir, if I may, I believe that was only his concern over the favored nations clause, which has been resolved.
I understand, but that's... Yeah, but that's all-inclusive. And I'm just wondering whether or not to give him an opportunity to speak on it, if there's an urgency, or you can wait until he comes back, so he can give his point of view. Is that not correct?
I'm not sure if Mr. Pacheco has been briefed on the results of the new contract or not. It was my understanding that he had that.
He has not, and I think he has some concerns about that, so I'm told.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, but I'm not familiar with that.
Is that urgency?
Well, there is from the standpoint that TRW and its subcontractors have been working at risk for about nine months now, and they're running out of the funds, and they need the assurances that this contract is in place before we can go forward. But other than that, there wouldn't be any sense of urgency, other than that.
Well, I would want to give him that courtesy if it was at all possible. But what do you think? Mr., yeah, we should, then I'll join with Ms. Chick and Mr. Hernandez and continue until Friday when he returns. I think it's proper and appropriate.
All right.
Okay?
All right. So far, we've had two people suggest, three people suggest it be continued, and Ms. Mizakowski's office says that's fine with them. So how long do we need to continue this? Till Friday? All right. So item 15 will be continued till Friday. Thank you. And my advice to you is try to answer all their questions between now and Friday.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe the next item is item 17, which was called special by Mr. Savornich. And you have an amending motion. Push the button, please. Thank you. Go.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Motion 17A just asked that we place a project called the Accessible Taxi Grant as project number 122 in the Transit Capital category of our request to the MTA call for projects. What it is, is to offer incentive to taxi operators to make taxicabs more wheelchair-accessible throughout the city. And I would just like to ask that we include this. It was an oversight, and it should be, it should have been added.
All right. So if there's no objection to item 17A, that will be added to item 17, the Transportation Committee report. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on 17? Seeing none, open the roll on 17 as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. That's approved.
Yeah, Madam Chair, on item 15, is Mr. Pacheco going to be back on Friday? Is he excused for Friday? Oh, so he will be here on Friday? Okay.
Wait, we're getting conflicting answers here. Is he back on Friday? He is not excused on Friday, so as far as we know, he will be here on Friday. Fourth with on 17 as amended. All right. The big moment has arrived, ladies and gentlemen. We're up to item 30. And let me just, just before you all jump up, let me just explain what has to happen here. Because this is a Rule 16 item, the council... Thank you. Wow. It's never been this quiet in here. Because this is a Rule 16 item, it takes 10 votes to consider the item. We have a lot of people who want to be heard, and so what I would like to ask you to do is direct your comments, which I think you're going to do anyway, to the question of why you think the council should or should not consider the item as it appears on the agenda. When we finish the public hearing, the, and I have 19 people signed up to speak, when we finish the public hearing, the council members will be free to address the question of whether or not to consider item, whatever its number is, 30. And that will be the first vote that the council has to take, is whether or not to consider it. So we do have 19 people. Ms. Goldberg's office has seen all the cards. And, I'm sorry, what? Just hang on. So the, now all of a sudden, I have three people signed up to speak here. Do you want to do that before the public hearing, or after? You can't do it, because the issue is, we want to give the public a chance to be heard on this. You got more? Is that another item 30?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Item 30, okay. Now, I have, I now have 20 people who wish to be heard. So members of the council, how long a hearing do you want to have here? Let's just go through them. I'm going to take first the people who are for the proposal, and then the people who are either against it or have not said. And so we'll just go through this, and if I can ask you all to be reasonably brief and not repeat what everybody before you said, remember that we are focused first and foremost on whether the council should take up this item today. So, in order, I'm just going to call a few names at a time and ask you to be prepared to come up fairly quickly. Erwin Chemerinsky, Reverend Jeff Carr, Christina Duncan, Maria Elena Durazo, the first four. All right, Mr. Chemerinsky's not here, I understand, but there is a letter from him. Reverend Carr.
Yes, thank you, council members. I am here to ask you to consider this motion, because I think that there are about 250,000 people, of which I'd like to ask a number of those, there are not 250,000 people here today, but there's a number of people here today. I'd like them to stand.
If you have that many here, you're in trouble with the fire department.
Would everyone who's for this motion, please stand from the community. We formed a coalition called the Ad Hoc Coalition on Council Representation, which has over 40 organizations, businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, neighborhood associations, and nonprofits, who believe that we need to have representation. Actually, we all have teabags today, because I believe it was over 250 years ago that there was a slogan in Boston in the harbor called "No Taxation Without Representation." And you have one as well, I believe. And so we believe that we need representation here in council district. With some of the issues that are coming forward in the next few months, for example, the budget, the way the process has gone in the past, I think it has been such that every council district has had to often fight for the resources for their district. And we feel like our district will have an unfair advantage without representation. And I think the SNAP issue that came up earlier is just one example of how hard we're going to have to work for the next seven months to be able to get things done in our neighborhood, in our community.
Yeah, we just overrode the veto for you unanimously.
And we appreciate that. So, thank you.
Ms. Duncan.
Hello, my name is Christina Duncan. I'm the Executive Director of Hollywood Community Housing Corporation, also here to urge the council to appoint Sharon to the city council until a new council member is elected in June. The 13th District deserves and requires representation during this period. And Sharon's been Jackie's Chief of Staff for, since 1993. She lives in the district. She knows the system and will have no learning curve. The reasons the 13th District needs a vote, the council, are really too numerous to get into here. The most important of which is the budget hearings that are coming up, and that 13th District deserves a voice in this debate. Jackie has been a strong voice in support of housing, and we know that Sharon will continue to support this very important cause. We urge the council to vote in favor of her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I am going to call the next five speakers, and if they could please line up behind the podium, and that way we'll save some time in regards to persons rising and walking over. Maria Elena Durazo, Celine Havlicek, I believe, Mary Lou Dudas, Miguel Contreras, and Rose Ayala. If those persons could please come forward and be prepared to speak. Commissioner?
Oh, that's another issue. Good morning. Maria Elena Durazo with the Hotel Restaurant Workers Union. A significant number of our members, a significant number of hotel restaurant workers live in the 13th District, and really count on their representative to raise the issues of working-class men and women. We know between now and July that there are going to be a number of issues of great concern to them, to our union, and of course, to the rest of the residents of the district. And we feel very strongly that there should be a representative with a voice in that process. The city will be negotiating contracts with unions, again, many members of which live in the district, and we need to know that there's going to be someone listening specifically to the constituents of the 13th Council. I know there are other issues and legal issues. We support the appointment of Sharon Deluge because she has a history of representing the residents of the 13th District. She knows the district, and we feel very confident that she will work very, very hard to listen to all of the residents of the district. And so, again, in representing our members, many, many of whom, thousands of whom live in the district, we strongly support the motion to appoint Sharon Deluge. And if this needs further consideration, then we would support referring this to a committee for further consideration and more information to come to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Celine Havlicek.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Selene Havlicek. Vengo representando a las comunidades de Hollywood Eco Par. Más que nada quisiera decirles a ustedes que necesitamos...
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Selena Havlicek, and I'm here representing the communities of Hollywood.
Representar a la comunidad quiere decir que hemos trabajado, que el por ciento de todas las personas que estamos aquí somos voluntarias, que hemos trabajado casa por casa para continuar con nuestros proyectos de la comunidad. Necesitamos que no represente, porque nos sentimos como sólidas, como que no tenemos alguien, así que por favor pedimos, suplicamos tener representante, y quién más que Charo es la que más puede representarnos a nosotros.
Those of us who are here, the great percentage of us are community volunteers. We've done a lot of door-to-door organizing in our neighborhood. We've got a lot of projects that we're working on, and we really feel like we'll be protected and we'll feel solid if we have representation, and who better than Sharon, who's worked with us and who knows us.
Y quisiera que todas las personas que estamos apoyando a Charo se paren todas y digamos que estamos unidos todos.
So if everybody who is supporting this could please stand up and show our unity. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Miguel Contreras, and I serve as Secretary Treasurer of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor. It's a, this issue, we had some debate on it at the Federation of Labor. It's a key issue for us, because we have about, you know, over 26,000 union members that live in the 13th District. So it's a real working-class district, and a real key for the unions of Los Angeles County. We understand that the next few months, you'll consider the 202 budget, and we think that all the council districts, especially a working-class district like the 13th, should have its proper representation in this process. As you know, the city unions are going to be negotiating their contracts with the City of Los Angeles. We need to have a representative to vote on that contract. We count, in the last 16 years, there's been a good labor representative from the 13th District. We want that to continue, at least for the next six months. We know Sharon Deluge can give that proper representation to this district, and we also know that she's not running for this district. We know, because we're going to be holding endorsement hearings, and she's not on our list. So we know she is not running for this office. We think that she's more than capable to fill that vacant council seat. We think it's a no-brainer for you. We'd like you to try to set aside any kind of internal politics you might have, and look at the issue of representation. Look at the issue that working-class districts like this need a voice on the city council. Don't let this go vacant. Let's follow in Jackie's legacy and keep a strong labor voice. The LA County Federation of Labor and the unions strongly support the motion to fill this vacancy. Thank you.
My name is Mary Lou Dudas. I'm the Executive Director of the Hollywood Media District, which is a BID in the flatlands of Hollywood. We have about 330 parcels and 220 property owners. I'm also the past president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I happen to live in the 13th as well. I urge this council to do the right thing and appoint Sharon Deluge as the representative to the 13th. We have too many important issues coming up over the next six months to go without representation. Thank you very much.
Mi nombre es Rosa Ayala.
Good morning. My name is Rosa Ayala.
Yo vivo en el Distrito 13, que la señora Yaque nos representó con mucha dignidad y honestidad.
I live in District 13, where Jackie represented us with dignity and respect.
Ahora vengo a pedirle tomen en cuenta ustedes señores y señoras.
I ask that you consider sirs and madams.
La moción de que la señora Sharon sea la representante inmediatamente.
That Ms. Sharon be the representative immediately.
Pues ella nos ha escuchado a nosotros. Quién más para podernos representar y tomar este lugar?
She has listened to us, and who else to fill in the position?
Que ha sido la ayudante, la representante en todas las cosas de Yaque Cobre.
Who else but the person who has supported Jackie and worked side-by-side with Jackie?
Esta señora tiene la capacidad, la experiencia y la honestidad para representarnos.
This person has the capacity, the honesty?
No solo en esta comunidad, sino la comunidad obrera.
Not just in this community, but in the working-class community.
Quiero que cuando ustedes piensen también sienta con el corazón quién es la que debe estar en este lugar.
I want you to think not only with your minds, but with your hearts, who should be in this position?
Por favor, se los pido, tomen conciencia de que nosotros necesitamos el representante inmediatamente para tomar las decisiones y las necesidades que estamos pasando como comunidad.
I want you to take immediate decision about the community needs, and don't waver anymore and make a decision now.
La clase obrera necesita de personas como Sharon. Por favor, inmediatamente tomen esa decisión.
The working class needs someone like Sharon now.
Gracias.
Thank you.
The next five speakers, if I may ask them to come forward, and again, line up behind the podium. Catherine Moyers, Todd Lindgren, Joe Linton, Beth Steckler, and Fernando Chacon. In that order, please. And again, if you could introduce yourselves as you come to the podium, it would be appreciated. It was Moyers, Lindgren, Linton, Steckler, and Chacon. Ms. Moyers? Okay, she's not here, then it's Mr. Lindgren?
Yes. Good morning, council members. My name is Todd Lindgren. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to commend the community's support that we have here today. We at the Chamber are also concerned about our lack of representation. We also feel that the city charter specifies the appointment of a voting member to fill the seat. the seat. We'd also like to commend the council for overriding the mayoral SNAP veto. We questioned the timing of the mayoral veto after Jackie had left office, and nobody was here to kind of articulate and defend the community's vision for SNAP. If ever there was a time that Hollywood needed representation, it's now. We have more economic development activity in Hollywood than in any other place in the city. We would hate to see the revitalization of Hollywood jeopardized by a lack of support on the council. A lack of representation can also only strengthen the secessionists' arguments. On behalf of the chamber, I'd like to urge you to appoint Sharon to fill the seat. Thank you.
Hi, Jo Linton, on behalf of the Parks First Coalition, working for the SNAP plan. I just want to say that, you know, the SNAP was moving along. We had a lot of community momentum, and I'm really conscious of how tough it is to get things done without a council member on your side for the last month and a half. We'd had really good relationship working with the Department of Transportation and Bureau of Street Services, and now all of a sudden, we're having trouble getting those folks' time without the council office. So I would urge you to give us continuity in the projects that we're in the middle of, give us representation, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Beth Steckler?
Hi, my name's Beth Steckler. I'm with the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. We're an association of nonprofit housing developers and their partners who develop affordable housing. And I just want to, many of the things that have already been said, we agree with. There's some very important issues in terms of housing that are before the council, and we believe Sharon Delugege can carry on in Jackie Goldberg's tradition of being a strong advocate for housing. There's the housing element, there's the consolidated plan, where you're going to take up the Community Development Block Grant, as well as the city budget. So we urge you to appoint Sharon Delugege to the 13th City Council seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernando Chacon, followed by Lois Arken, Jim McQuiston, Andrew Montelagra. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Fernando Chacon. I'm the Director of Youth Services for El Centro del Pueblo. I'm here in support of Sharon Delugege because she's worked very hard for the Echo Park community. We got to remind ourselves, something recently just happened that occurred, there was a building that collapsed, and Sharon and her staff, also Jackie's, Jackie, we like to commend Jackie in Echo Park because they've done a great tremendous job in helping those residents of that building that was recently collapsed in Echo Park. Sharon and her staff were the ones there. Jackie Goldberg has taken tremendous leadership, and we like to remind, commend her for that. She carried the torch proudly, we say, in Echo Park, and we want someone who's going to take leadership, and that would be Sharon Delugege. Again, as the Director of Youth Services for El Centro del Pueblo, there are 98,000 kids in the 13th District. Sharon has been very helpful in helping us, El Centro del Pueblo, running and providing services for these youth. So once again, El Centro is in great support for Sharon Delugege. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Lois Arken from the Los Angeles Eco Village. I agree with everything that's been said here so far, and I just want to add, we're running as fast as we can just to stand still, and that's why we need this additional representation. With it, we can all move so much more quickly in making a healthier, more sustainable city. Thank you.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. Our area, of course, has been severely impacted in several ways, and we need a city councilman. One of the areas of impact right now is that the city council is considering giving a large sum to our opponents, who are trying to separate us from the City of Los Angeles. We need a city councilman to help us and to make the playing field equal.
Thank you. Mr. Montelagra, followed by Chris Shabel, excuse me, Don Lipman, John Walsh, and Ruth Goulet, or Goulet, I'm sorry, I can't read it. Mr. Montelagra, he left, all right? Chris Shabel? Wasn't here on the earlier item. Don Lipman? There's this post in the way, so I can't see if somebody's coming. John Walsh?
Disabled.
Okay. Go ahead. Sorry, I just can't see you when you're back there.
I just take a little time to get here.
Fine.
I'm from the 13th District.
And you are?
Chris Shabel.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the President of the Hollywood Stakeholders, which is 17 organizations. I'm President of the Vine Street Association, President of the Hollywood Highland Silverlake Democratic Club. That's among others. I would like to tell you, I've been in the district since Peggy Stevenson. Peggy Stevenson was the last person who was appointed to the position when her husband died. I would like you today to vote for voters in the 13th District. Either call for a special election or wait until the regular election takes place, which will be at the latest, five months. I think if we all took a hold, if the whole city took a hold for five months, it wouldn't do anybody any harm. We want you to, we want to vote on our representative. That's what the teabags meant. It wasn't that an appointment would be made, but it was for the vote. Jackie Goldberg abrogated her responsibilities to her constituents to further her own political and financial status and still, and still tries to affect control on the powers she has abandoned. Her staff still shows up at meetings saying they represent Jackie Goldberg. It's time to cut the Gordian knot and say no to Jackie Goldberg. You can't have your cake and eat it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Lipman?
I live in Hollywood, and there are two matters here that seem to be before us. One is representation, and one is a vote. On the representation, we have representation. We have independent, unbiased representation from the chief legislative analyst. On the vote, these fine people want to vote. I have no objection to a vote, but let's have a vote by an unbiased, independent person that has not beholden just the special interest groups. They're wanting you to appoint a vote, but it's not a vote, it's a nice little election. You have to elect, and you're electing it not as a... I would be for, and I would support, an independent, unbiased person without any pre-arranged ties to a state assembly member that is going to make all the decisions for the 13th District. I have no objection to a special election. I have no objection to Sharon Delugege as a person, but it's the connection between Sacramento and the 13th District that just isn't appropriate. Now, I am confident that the current members of the city council, when it comes to a vote, when it comes to budgetary, when it comes to funds and services, I am confident the current members of this city council will not abandon the citizens of the 13th District. You're not going to abandon citizens or neighborhoods anywhere in the city of L.A. And I am confident that you will provide the necessary funding and the necessary services during any budget talks or any other matters that come before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, 24 years in the 13th. That deserves applause in itself. Only mugged three times, only mugged three times. Even the Pope in Rome does not have the power to appoint his own successor. And that's a political job, too. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, it's time that we say to Jackie, we have to exorcise her ghost from this building. She hovers over here, you know, Austin Powers, did you see the movie? There was me and Mini Me, the little, the little... Now, this is going to be Jackie Goldberg's little Mini Me, Sharon Delugege. And I want to apologize to all little people for saying that they're like Goldberg. This is a power grab. Sharon Delugege would be a puppet. And if you don't believe that Sharon Delugege would be a puppet, you must think that Kermit the Frog is a real frog. You must think that Charlie McCarthy is a real boy. You're giving someone a vote. You know, in America, we had five members of the Supreme Court politicians who elected the President of the United States, five politicians. And now, we have 14 politicians here who are going to elect a city councilperson. I like the way the politicians, they've cut out the voters. Politicians now elect politicians. There is no reason. Now, I would say, God forbid that anybody up here drops dead, I will support your spouse to take your job.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
But I'm sure we're all going to live, we're going to have the spouses, they can stand. I'd like to finish by saying that nobody has died, and I'd like to say that this is backroom sleaze, because if Delugege comes in here, she goes to lobbyists, this is what she says, "You want my vote? Give Art Goldberg some money." Everybody knows that. These are, I just want the people to know that I am being...
Okay. Mr. Walsh, finish up.
Wait a second. No, 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 no. What you're supposed to say is quiet and don't catcall. Now, let's hear you say that, or are you on Jackie's side? And the First Amendment doesn't apply to John Walsh. It only applies to Jackie Goldberg's people.
Actually, I'm trying to represent the interest of the person. There's one more person who wishes to be heard.
They had 18... Look, I'm going to tell you that you are the saddest representative that we have up here.
I probably am. I am not a happy camper today, and I'd like to let Ruth Goulet have her time at the microphone.
18 minutes, I'm telling you.
Come on, finish up.
I'll finish by saying that it's a sorry day for democracy when, why don't we just elect Miguel Contreras?
Because we're, because we're going to let Ruth Goulet have her time at the microphone. All right. Thank you. Ruth Goulet, if you're here, there you are. This will be the last speaker. Go ahead.
I guess it's morning or afternoon.
No, it's afternoon.
Councilpeople.
That's why I'm the saddest person up here. Go ahead.
Pobrecita. My name is Ruth Goulet. I live in Hollywood. I have lived there for 25 years. I vote in Hollywood, and I own property in Hollywood. I am not a member of a union, and I am not a member of a nonprofit. I work for a living. I have...
All right, okay. This is the last speaker, you can just contain it. Let her finish.
When ex-councilperson Goldberg decided to run for another office, she abandoned the one that people in the 13th had voted her in for. To now ask for that office back for the next five months is a little outrageous and certainly unprecedented. Most of the people here appear not to understand that she is an assembly person. They keep referring to Councilwoman Goldberg. I have heard a couple of you up there refer to Councilwoman Goldberg. She isn't here. She's an assembly person in Sacramento. Recently, at a public hearing, someone came up to me and said that she represented Councilwoman Goldberg's district. I live in the 13th. That's where I vote. I would be very happy if you want to hold a special election or if you want to appoint a non-political, non-biased person, but it would have to be neutral. We are going to vote in the 13th. We don't need your vote for this. This would be an unprecedented situation, and I think all of you recognize that this would open a can of worms down the road that none of you would want on your records. Please, we ask you, the chief legislative analyst and the man who is in the chief legislative analyst's office, who is handling the 13th, is Mr. Avak Katoian. He has been very, very attentive to us. He has been responsive to us in many ways. I spoke with Mr. Deaton this morning in terms of the budget process. Excuse me, are they going to talk for a while now?
Can we have a little quiet over there? All right. Can we?
I spoke with Mr. Ron Deaton this morning. He said that in terms of the budget, Mr. Katoian would, of course, sit in on all of the budget processes and would be able to consult at every level in the budget process. We are not without a leader, we are not without a representative. We would like to do our own voting. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Now, members of the council, I have three people so far who want to be heard, and we are, remember that the, I'm advised by the city attorney that we have to focus our discussion on whether or not to take up the item in council today. It takes 10 votes, because it's a Rule 16 item and did not go to committee, it takes 10 votes to consider. We will take that vote after whoever wants to talk about whether we should consider it or not does so. Ms. Chacon's first.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, in terms of whether we should consider this today or send it to committee, I can't think of any reason why we cannot have this discussion today. Any of the facts, any of the opinions, any of our views, we are certainly capable of putting on the table for discussion today. We have a lot of people here, and some of them are on one side and some of them are on the other. It's not easy for people to come into City Hall and participate and observe our deliberations. This was scheduled for today, and I ask for the votes to take it under consideration. It is an option according to the charter, and I believe whether it goes to committee first or not, it's the full council who should be deliberating on this. I am trying very hard to keep my comments strictly to whether we should consider it today, but I'm very interested for, from those who do not think we should talk about it today, what those reasons might be. This is about deciding on representation for a district that has none for quite a number of months. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I'll also try and be careful with my words. Quite frankly, it also translates to 157 days. It translates to five months, seven days. I know for a fact that I won't be here after June 30th, and that my office is doing a tremendous amount of work on a daily basis. One of the difficult things, I think, for many of us to understand is what happens when there is a vacancy. I came into office filling a vacancy, a vacancy that took an election to fill. And you need to understand that I had to call the chief administrative officer and ask why there was no capital projects being planned in the first councilmatic district. I had to try and find out why library money was transferred from one place to another. I had to try and find out why it was that no block grant monies were being spent in my district, a district with tremendous needs. And I came to the basic conclusion that when a council of 15 members makes decisions, it tries to make them taking into account 15 districts. But when the council of 14 members makes a decision, it basically takes into account 14 members. And that's what we're talking about today. We're talking about it in the atmosphere of a new charter, and we're talking about a community that, quite frankly, is not equal to other communities in the city. And that's why they needed that voice, and that's what the previous council member represented. Now, from my perspective, there are two issues before us. The first issue is the role of the council when there is a vacancy created under this new charter. And we have an opinion by Erwin Chermuski, or Chermuski. I always have problems with those non-Spanish surnames. But we have an opinion from him that says we have no choice. We also have an opinion from our city attorney that says we should play our role and fill the position, because the charter has entrusted more power to the mayor, and we need the council to be able to fulfill its role. So again, members, I... So again, members, I know that there can be a variety of reasons, and chances are this is not going to pass today. And you need to understand that I know that each and every one of us is casting a vote knowing we don't represent the Thirteenth Councilmatic District. It doesn't mean that those constituents shouldn't have a voice for these five months. And that's why I would urge us to basically make the decision to make an appointment, and then make a decision as to who we will appoint. I think they're two separate questions, and that is my position, and I'm really ready to act today, because we did have a building that collapsed. Bahak and the CLA has to come to me to introduce motions, and the quicker they have a voice, the better.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the city attorney to come to the table, please. I want to understand what our obligations are and what our discretion is. We have letters from the city attorney submitted today from Mr. Shamarinsky and from others. Here's my question. It's been argued that, under the new charter, maybe under the old charter as well, that when there's a vacancy created, we have an obligation, no choices, an obligation to fill it. Is the election scheduled for April 10th a sufficient act to fulfill our obligations under the charter to fill the vacancy, or is it not?
The answer to your question is no, because it doesn't fill the vacancy. It elects someone to a new term of office.
If the election on April 10th is not sufficient, what choices must the council choose among in order to fulfill our duties under the charter?
The council must choose either to call a special election to fill the vacancy or to appoint someone to fill the vacancy.
The council is, I think evidently, not going to call a special election for a month before the election otherwise would be. Therefore, the question, from what you're saying, comes down to what satisfies our obligation to appoint. I'm asking this because there have been a series of very contentious conversations this morning in the past hour and a half, sidebars about what that answer is. Must we, to fulfill our, if we're not going to call a special election, is the city attorney arguing that we must choose to appoint sometime between now and April 10th, presumably sooner rather than later, or do we have other choices? What must the council do? What can we do?
Councilmember, to go back over the advice of the city attorney's office this morning, it's important to point out that our advice is that the charter creates a mandatory duty for the city council to either, to fill a vacancy, and it leaves some discretion to the city council to consider either the special election, and repeating Mr. Alpern's response, the regularly scheduled election is not the special election that would satisfy that, or to make an appointment. We go on to tell the city council in the letter that we provided this morning that the charter does not provide time periods in which the city council shall fill the vacancy by either the appointment or special election, and case law tells us that when there's a mandatory duty of any kind put upon the city council, the court will read into that a reasonable period of time in which the body, the legislative body, shall fulfill its duty.
Let me cut to a point that was discussed, but not, I don't think definitively, about an hour ago, somewhere around the side of the horseshoe. Are you saying that sometime between now and April 10th, the council must appoint? Or, as was suggested by a member of your team, are you saying that the council must deliberate on whether to appoint? Those are two different questions. One is, you got to actually choose somebody. The other is, you have to have an open debate about whether to choose somebody. I've heard both things. I am confused, and I think the council needs definitive advice.
You're also over your time, so let him answer the question, and then we'll...
Those are two different points, which I think are born out of what would be the enforcement mechanism, and I think that's what some of the discussions were earlier in the day and maybe before today. If the question is, what is the enforcement mechanism for the mandatory duty, and if one assumes that, no, but that's how, but this is how we came to this discussion. If the question is, what is the enforcement mechanism? If there was, one can hypothetically imagine that there would be a lawsuit and a superior court judge reviewing the charter and deciding what would be the mandatory duty of the city council. Hypothetically, I believe, as we were discussing it, we thought we could imagine a court compelling this body to deliberate on which it was going to do and how it was going to fulfill its function.
Okay. Mr. Deaton, did you want to add something to that?
I just think you should understand, mechanically, you could, and the city clerk probably should respond to this as well, but if you wanted a special election, you could have, by, my understanding is by the first week in February, include that in the April election and deem the people who are filed for the April primary to be candidates, or I guess you could open the, I'm not sure what the purpose of that would be, but you could open up the, I guess it'd open the other candidates' will, have a special election.
Don't you have to open the candidate list for a special election? Somebody may want to run for the special and not for the...
I think the clerk has arrived. But in any event, assuming that in April, you would then have a special election and a regular election. If no one won 50% in either, which is a definite possibility, then it would go both the special election and the general within need in June. The special election, assuming that the same person won both of them, or I guess it doesn't matter, whoever...
Doesn't matter. If one person won both of them, they can take office immediately, but it messes up their two-term limit.
No, it does not.
Not, doesn't, okay.
We're only talking about the period through the end of June of 2001. So literally, if we did not have a winner in April and went on to June, you'd have approximately the same period we had for Mr. Holden when we delayed that process. You'd probably have something on the neighborhood of 20 to 25 days for the person to serve as the elected official through June 30th, 2001. And then the person would be sworn in for the term starting July 1st.
Okay. I have so far five council members who wish to be heard, three for the first time and two for the second time. Ms. Mizakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the city attorney, in the letter that you wrote today, you said that the council, under the new charter, must act within a reasonable period of time. Could you define a reasonable period of time?
The short answer is no.
Well, okay, then, in...
It's a reasonable period of time under the...
Let's memorialize this moment. You don't often get that short an answer.
We could then, were the regular election to be held as is scheduled, a winner either in April or in June, we could then appoint that person to fill that position for the duration of the end of June or the remaining months if there's a winner at 50% plus one in April to the end of that term, and still be within this guideline.
Yes, you could.
Okay. Well, so, members of the council, I think what we really have is all alternatives in front of us. I don't think we are, I think there were some who read this and said, like, we must act to do something. We could act to do nothing and appoint the person who wins in the normal course. Be that as it may, I am one who does believe that it is appropriate to appoint today. And I have no... My concerns are only that we really should, if this is going to be a process we are going to consider in the future, that I think overall, beyond today, we ought to look at this and look at some guidelines that we would consider. But the guidelines that I would like to consider, I think, are considered today. We waited until after the filing period closed for the regular election, so that as we might consider an appointment, it is not someone who is running who could be given an advantage in an election. I think that would be not appropriate for the council to do. There were those who talked about, and I appreciate that the CLA is doing a very good job as a caretaker for that office, but listen to what we call it, a caretaker. It's not truly representative. We had two matters today, the override of a veto on a very important plan in that district, and a matter involving a question of interpretation on a project in that district. We spoke a lot about it. The caretaker for that district didn't speak, didn't have a place, as at a seat at the table, to participate, to talk about representative, representation of that district. I think we did well by that district, but I don't think any of us spoke with the passion, the intimate concern, the intimate connection to knowing those projects, knowing that district, having worked three or four years on those projects. That's what is missing. I think the person who is being suggested today for the appointment has that experience, has that passion, has that knowledge, and is her own person. And I believe that that speaks to the reason why we should appoint. For those who say that also the caretaker will have a position during the budget, the caretaker can sit in the audience, can sit around and listen, but not participate. That person will not have a seat voting on the budget, will not have a seat to participate in the deliberations of either the Budget and Finance Committee or the city council ultimately on the budget. And I think that is what is lacking and why an appointment is appropriate.
Mr. Wax.
I think the question you asked us to address is why we should do it today or not do it today. And I think the discussion we just had here is a good reason why we should not do it I don't think we should do it today because, very much for the reasons Mr. Walsh mentioned. It's not an open process. It's an insider, it's an insider deal. If we're going to appoint someone instead of electing someone, why not let all the people who want to be considered apply for it? Since when does government say, "We're going to pick your person, and no one else need apply"? That's what's wrong. There may be a lot of other people. There may, in fact, Ms. Galanter, you just mentioned it when you said if we had a special election, there might be some people who would run for that that wouldn't even want to run, for example, for the regular election. I don't think it's right, I don't think it's right for government to just sit and pick. That's what's wrong around here. Now, today you may like it because it works for you, but I can tell you countless examples when it's done against you and you don't like the results. And the only way you avoid that is having a fair and open process. There is a legitimate debate as to whether we should elect or appoint. In the thirty years I've been here, we've never appointed, we have elected. If one wants to change that, then one has to do it in a fair and open way, and everybody who wants to appoint and bring their people down here, and all the references they might have as to why they might be the best person, gets a chance to do it. But when City Hall decides with a group of well-connected people that it wants to do something and not give anyone else a chance to compete openly, we defeat the very reasons why you exist in the first place, to be a voice of the community. So if we're going to appoint, let all the people who want a chance to apply, apply. Let them all bring their people down, or let us consider the different qualifications and then make the appointment, if that's what we choose to do. But the worst thing we can do is decide, we know what's best for everybody else, and we'll just tell you, because that's what we do here all the time, and that's what's wrong with government.
Hey, round two, Ms. Chick.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish my colleague had introduced a motion, putting that forward, because to me, the principle is to not leave a district without a voice. There was, I think, one of us anonymously quoted in the paper recently on this subject that says, "Most council members believe the office is being taken care of on the routine matters." Well, it's exactly what Mr. Hernandez was talking about. It's not the routine matters that get deliberated here in council, where we want to give the people we're representing a voice and a vote. It's ironic to me that at a time when we have a new charter that is advancing, a great desire on the part of the public to be given a bigger voice and say in government through neighborhood councils, through the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, through the creation of area planning councils, that we are actually sitting here trying to decide whether it's appropriate to give that voice to the thousands of people who live in a district that is left vacant for over six months. And colleagues, I want to remind you that this has always been, Mr. Wax, an alternative, appointing. And to me, that is the principle, is to put, it's not about, despite the fact that my motion named a person, for me, this has never been about who as much as, let's do it. When the former council member of the district first approached me on this back in November, it was a simple decision on my part to say yes, because I first asked myself, what would I want for the thousands of people that I represent? And it certainly made sense to me that the chief of staff, who has been with that district and with the people that that council seat represents for seven and a half years, would be somebody who would be qualified to carry forward for six months. It seems to me that we are discussing the substance of the issue today. We've talked about technicalities and how we can get, you know, around...
...the intent and possibly avoid being sued or standing up under scrutiny.
But that's not what we are supposed to be deciding today. We're supposed to be deciding, what is the right and best thing to do for the people of the Thirteenth Fifth.
Ms. Walters, for the first time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At first, I decided not to speak, and then I thought, well, maybe I would. There's several of us sitting here today who were elected to fill unexpired terms of our predecessors. Since the time that I've been here, after being elected to fulfill an unexpired term, we've had several other members who have been elected to fill unexpired terms. And during the time that I've been here, I haven't heard anybody who is currently here or who was here raise the voice about appointing somebody being preferable over the election of somebody. Many years ago, 1979, there was a vacancy on the school board when the current ambassador, Diane Watson, left to go to the state senate. There was a lot of community pressure to appoint somebody that was generated in the main by someone who wanted to be appointed. I was one of those. They said they would do what Mr. Wax said. You know, it's open, anyone who wants to put their name on the list and come make a presentation, do that. I was one of those who did it. Then the decision was that the board members were getting a lot of pressure, and I was generating some of that. They found a compromise candidate who had not come forward and appointed the Reverend Louis Bowler to that spot. But I was elected in the primary, but waited to take my seat until July because Reverend Bowler wanted to stay there. There has to be some, not only appearance of fairness, but real fairness in this. In the Congress today, we have, a good portion of our city is unrepresented because of the untimely death of Congressman Julian Dixon. The very day that he passed away, that office was notified that it was no longer Congressman Julian Dixon's office. It was the 32nd Congressional District office. And so no more phones could be answered, Julian Dixon's office. And I think that needs to pertain here as well. I think that we meet the test of fairness and the test of legality by following what has been suggested here, that we deliberate on it. We can determine that a person will have a special in conjunction with the regular election on the dates that they have been established. And the special in conjunction with the regular is the most fiscally responsible way to go. It will cost us a million or more dollars, and Mr. Clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, to do a special election not in conjunction with the regular election. As to the person, Sharon, I'm going to mess up your last name, so I'm not going to say it. I've known Sharon for many, many years. I think very highly of Sharon, and would have no problem supporting her were she running for this seat. But this is a deliberation that this council has established precedent for, that it will not appoint, that it will schedule elected... not appoint, that it will schedule elections, whether a special is required, as was the case of Mr. Hernandez, or whether that we will go with the special in conjunction with the regular election. So I urge us to take that route, the special in conjunction with the regular election.
All right. But the matter that's before us is whether to consider Ms. Chick's motion to appoint Mr. Delugage. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. If we get to the point where there's a discussion of the merits as to whether to do this or not, I have very strong views on a lot of the issues that have been raised, but we're not there yet, as the chair reminds us. I think especially because, as I believe Mr. Hernandez indicated, we have a new charter and at least one charter commission president has weighed in, and this might be perceived by some as a test of how the charter is going to be implemented, we have to understand what the rules are. Not because they're technicalities, quite to the contrary, the rules could in fact dictate the outcome here. So I want to return to some of the questions that I was asking at the outset that didn't get full answers because the time was cut short. I want to bear down a little bit. Ms. Chick said, I think appropriately, "We shouldn't be trying to fashion an approach that best insulates us from losing a lawsuit and develop the strategy under which we can perhaps win." We should be figuring out what the law, the charter that the voters enacted, requires of us here. With that in mind, do we have to, if we choose not to call a special election, I'll get there in a second, do we have to appoint a person between now and April 10th?
The charter says that the council shall fill the unexpired term in one of two ways, either by special election or by appointment.
All right. So were we to choose, I want to be sure you, correct me if I misstate something, were we to choose not to have a special election, you're saying we have to appoint somebody, leaving aside the question as to who for the moment, correct?
Charter creates a mandatory duty, does not provide a timeline.
All right. So then the question comes, "What about the special election?" Now, I presumed in the earlier questions I asked that we weren't going to call a special election. Ms. Walters raises the million-dollar cost associated with that and so forth. But then some people have said, "The April 10th election could, for all intents and purposes, be the special election." Is that a game? Is it appropriately called a special election were we to do that? Is that a real choice before us or not?
You can call a special election to fill the vacancy and consolidate it with the regularly scheduled elections in April and in June.
Were we to, so you're saying it would comply with the charter for us to term the April 10th election also?
No, no, no. We hold two elections concurrently. On the same day, you vote in a special and you vote in the regular.
There would be two items on the ballot.
Can you run in both of them?
Madam Chair, Madam, so is it then the case that you could end up with somebody winning the special election different from the person who wins in the primary, the person who wins in the special, and I take it it's a winner-take-all, there's no general, it's just the special?
Not true.
Okay. Then what is the advantage of having a separate special election since a person, I guess the point is this, you could envision the following scenario, I guess, special and general and regular primary at the same time. Different people come out of that victorious. Somebody wins in the special election with 51% of the votes, but nobody emerges from the regular primary with that. The two top candidates run off in June for the general, but the person who wins the special in April is the council member for two months.
No.
All right, help us out. What would be the result then? Why would you call the special if that wouldn't be the result?
You would have, if he wins, if the person wins in April, they, if there's a clear victory in April in the special, then it would be for the remainder of the term. If there was a runoff, the person would be.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, but if there is a runoff.
By the way, just comment, the reason that we have never done that, and we have always gone to the regular election since I've been here, which is roughly not quite half a century, is that nobody, and the two charters are for all intents and purposes the same, is that we have never got advice in my 35 years that that wasn't satisfactory.
Okay, I understand, but let me, my time is almost, let me just finish. Well, okay, but can I finish anyway? The point is this, though, if we have a special and a general called for the same dates, you could also end up with a situation where the winner of the special election has to emerge from a general and is the council member for about three weeks, right? All right. If we don't appoint, and if we don't call a special election to be concurrent with the April 10th election, do we have any other choices that would satisfy the charter's mandatory requirements?
You could appoint.
Like, why can't you wait to see what happens in the April primary and then the June runoff? And whoever wins that makes the appointment like you've always done.
Okay, so that, and that satisfies?
The charter used to read, "Shall be filled by either appointment or election in the manner set forth in this section." Shall be filled by either appointment or election. And it set forth how that was done. And for Mr. Holden, I believe Mr. Cunningham resigned on September 30th, and Mr. Holden took, was appointed in June of the following year. Using, he was.
He was appointed after he was elected. He was elected for the term beginning in July, and because the secret vacant, he was appointed earlier. That's why he outranks me here. Okay. Mr. Holden is next, so to speak, yes. In seniority, he does.
I am taller.
That's who. And your voice is louder.
It's already been explained that my situation is applicable to the current and the charter before amendments, which is, has not changed. Mr. Fuhr, you won't listen to this. In any case, offices were vacated in September of 1986, and the council district 10 was without representation until, I think, June 7th or June 9th of the following year. So we had to go through the process. And I think that the mayor at that time, in, to revisit history, I think in early '60s, '61, '62, were a guy named Farrar, I believe, who was the council district for the 10th, and was appointed to the controller's office and left the seat vacant or vice versa. And then they wanted to make an appointment of Tom Bradley, and they said, "No." They appointed someone else, then we started a recall, and we initiated the recall with the signatures, they disqualified the signatures. So he did not get elected until the next election. And from that point forward, he said, "Never again." And even though he had his own candidate, Councilman Cunningham, to succeed him, he did not ask for an appointment of Cunningham. He said, "You got to go through the process." And since that time on, they've been going through the process. The last person to ever be appointed was John Farrar. And I'm sure he'll still be the last person to be appointed, because we're pretty much entrenched on how you get selected or elected to this office that we not serve. Mr. Hernandez in the special election, and the list goes on, the special election. And so, but even if you were to consider appointing somebody, how do you decide which one to point? Is you going to have a mass meeting in the community? Will the community select a person? I mean, there's a lot to consider here. The entire community might say, "Well, Nate Holden's not my choice." The fact of the matter is that I never got 100% of the vote. Well, I got 99.9, so that was pretty close. Anyway, I, it's a lot of problems, I think Ms. Walters has already explained what she thinks there are as well.
Mr. Brunson.
I wasn't going to speak, but there's a couple of questions I had to ask. But I think, I think it was defined by the city clerk correctly, and that is the fact that the election that we have coming up, we would then appoint that winner for the balance of the term. And that would, that would satisfy the charter. Is that not correct?
And that could either happen in April, although we have 13 candidates who filed for council district 13, or it could happen in June.
So we don't need a special election? That election would serve as a special election. Is that correct?
You would basically be looking at making an appointment based on the results of the general, in the primary election.
Of that election, of the general election. The question I was going to ask before you made the statement was that if we did have a special election for that period, would the same time requirements as far as signatures and everything else be in effect? And if that were the case, then it would, that vote would take place after the primary election, which is going to take place in April. So, you know, that wouldn't really make any sense. Let me say this, I have the highest regard for Sharon. And if I were inclined to support an appointee, I would certainly suppoine her, support her, because I think she's done a good job for the district, she's worked for the district, and I respect her. However, I think I've always been very, very hesitant to try to take the place of the electorate and try to suppose what their will might be. When Sharon came to me and told me she was considering, wanted me to support her for this, I asked her, I told her, "Why don't you run for it?" I said, "If you, why make the declaration? Even if you're appointed, run for it, because, you know, you'd probably be a good candidate for it." However, she had made a pledge that she wasn't going to run if she was appointed. Well, you know, I've listened to this debate, I think it's a healthy debate, but I think that the tradition of the council, and I believe Peggy Stevenson was the last appointee, not John Farrar, if I'm not mistaken. Somebody correct me, you've been here longer than me, Ron. Not much, but.
Well, come on, Hal, because your time's running.
Okay. So I was the last appointee?
1966.
Okay, thank you. Very good, thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
I'm going to try something Ms. Walters wasn't willing to try, and that is the word "Delugage." Did I pronounce it right? And a lot of us seem to be caught up on that issue, and what I'd like to do is also propose we separate the question. Members of the council, it's great for us to acknowledge history and what we've done in the past, but I want us to recognize the present, because the present says we have term limits, and we're going to be going through these kinds of transitions more often. The present says that we have a new charter that basically has changed the power of the balance that we previously had. And those are the issues that are before us. See, I'm trying to remind us, even today, I know that there are two council candidates considering a congressional seat. I know that there's going to be a tremendous transition of open seats because of term limits. But we're not talking about that transition today. What we're talking about today is a vacancy that was already created, quite frankly, because of term limits. An opportunity was created at the state level, one of our colleagues chose to take that opportunity because they were going to be termed out. And what happened is the voice of the 13th no longer exists. I'm just trying to explain that part, because this new charter requires us, in many of our decisions, to deal with the issue. But if Mr. Savornich, for example, would have won his election, that imbalance would have been greater. And so the role of the council to fill a vacancy, whether it be by an election, and I'm not talking about, I'm not trying to pretend I'm holier-than-thou by saying, "Let's fill a vacancy for 15 days." I'm talking about an annual process we go through called the budget, an annual process we go through called the block grant, that there'll be a vacancy. And so from my perspective, I just want to bring it back to today, because there is this new charter in place. We are going to be dealing with the issue of the balance of power between the mayor's office and this legislative body. We are going to be dealing with more vacancies. When reapportionment happens, and I'm not going to be here for that process, you're going to deal with a lot of this, because that's what happens with reapportion. So again, members of the council, I would ask us to seriously consider our action of inaction as setting a dangerous precedent, and that we deal with the issue of whether we appoint today, when you have this kind of midterm situation, because I suspect it will happen more, and then we deal with the issue of who. I think we're clouding that question when we're dealing with the issue of who before we're dealing with the issue of appointment.
All right, but that is exactly the issue that's before us today and what we're supposed to be discussing at this moment, is whether to take up today, January 23rd, whether to take up the appointment of Sharon Delugage to the council, or whether not to take it up today.
My, Madam Chair, that's why I wanted to separate that question.
Yeah, but that's not, you can't do that. What we're debating, not at this stage. You can separate that question if we in fact decide that we need to take it up on January 23rd, then you can make all kinds of motions. But the only thing before us, we have, Mr. Fuhr wants to be heard one more time, the only thing before us today is whether or not the council should consider today Ms. Chick's motion to appoint Ms. Delugage. Mr. Fuhr.
Previous question.
Previous question, all right. The previous question is being called, which ends the debate. Now, the vote is going to be as follows. When we open the roll, if you wish to take it up today, then you will vote yes. If you, there was no, is there an objection to the previous question? Oh, nobody else seemed to want to speak. All right, so debate is closed. If we do not take it up today, that doesn't mean the issue is necessarily dead, it just means that it does not come up in the full council today. So, oh, sorry? A yes vote is to take it up today, a no vote would not take it up today, that would have the effect of requiring that it be referred to a committee. Okay? So, open the roll on whether to consider item 30 today. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, seven noes.
All right, that is not considered today, that did not pass.
I want to be recorded as a no vote.
No, you're not, actually. Mr. Brunson wants to be recorded as a no vote. It doesn't change the outcome. So the, it's okay, we'll fix it. It doesn't change the outcome, so we can fix it. The effect of that is that this will be referred to a committee from which it will come back to the council as soon as the committee is ready to bring it back to the council. And when it comes back, it can come back with all of the splits and issues that Mr. Hernandez and others.
Yeah, Madam Chair, could I move that it be referred to Government Efficiency Committee because they've been dealing with the charter issue?
You certainly may. I, you know, I think if you want to trust us to work it out afterwards, we can work out which committee it should go to, but.
I believe there was a motion I introduced last week that dealt with all of these things generically.
A cosmic one, yes, which is already in Rules and Elections, I believe.
It makes sense to me that the two are the same subject matter, should go to the same committee then.
Fine, I'll be the bad guy. All right. Yes, huh? No, I'm the chair, I'll decide where it gets referred, but I'm not going to do that right now. What I'm trying to do is move to the rest of the meeting. The next item, we have two more items, and both of them, I believe, are to be, thank you all, we really appreciate your enthusiastic help here. Those of you who are not involved in the closed sessions may excuse yourselves, and the council members may not.
Madam President, there's a request on item number 35 from the city attorney to continue that item to tomorrow, which would be January 24th.
All right, good, we'll continue item 35. Actually, while you're leaving, we do still have public comment on items not on today's agenda. So if I could ask those of you who are leaving to do so quietly, I'd like to give, and if I could ask the council members to just stay with me for a minute here, I'd like to give the members of the public who wish to speak to us on items not on today's agenda a chance to be heard. We're going to hear first from Mr. John Walsh and second from Ms. Shabel. Mr. Walsh, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on the agenda.
Well, it was worth taking the day off from work. It cost me $150, but any day we can shoot down Jackie Goldberg's attempt.
No, no, Mr. Walsh, that item was on today's agenda, that is not appropriate.
Okay, I'll talk about something else. We had a fire in this city a week ago, Towering Inferno 3. It happened at MTA building. There is now an investigation by the LAFD. There should be an investigation of the LAFD about their compliance. There was no compliance at that building. The fire alarms did not work at that building. The smoke was billowing throughout, outside the building, that's how people found out about it. In fact, the Fire Commission, this is a hot potato. We have talked to 60 Minutes on this. Now, remember how everyone laughed when I said I'd get, I'd get the Metro L on 60 Minutes? Well, they didn't laugh. I'm telling you that you're going to hear about what happened at that fire. A lot of people were almost killed, and part of the blame has to do is directly with our fire department, because there was a safety plan that the fire department fire department, because there was a safety plan that the fire department did not force MTA to comply with. I'll finish by saying, to show you what chaos there was in the building. In the LA Times, it says that Julian Burke was at a meeting when he saw smoke, the alarm had not sounded. What did Julian Burke do? He went down in the elevator. A seven-year-old child will tell you not to go down in the elevator. There was chaos at that building, and I blame the LAFD for part of that chaos. And you're going to see that issue coming up very soon. And as I said, it was worth $150 to come down here. And how many of you would pay $150 even to see Kat, to see the line game?
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
And you did a bad job today.
Thank you. Always appreciate the compliment. I refrain from comment on yours. Chris Shabel.
He's celebrating.
Is Ms. Shabel still here because of the pillar? I can't see, it's this post that does it. Go ahead.
They could do with a television.
Or a periscope is what actually I'm looking for.
Thank you for today's vote, and I'd like to make Mr. Hernandez aware that the people where the building had collapsed had called Jackie Goldberg's office, and they stated that on TV quite a number of times during the year before the building collapsed. So that was one time they were not taken any notice of.
All right, thank you. That closes the public comment period. We're now going to do items 10 and 12 forthwith, and we're going to go into executive session to deal with item 36. If you are not involved in the executive session, please leave. All right, so item 36A is going to be referred to the Public Safety Committee, and that brings us to what's left.
Motions for posting and referral?
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
All right, or do we have adjourning motions? We do. And everyone, please rise for adjourning motions, and in that case, sort of like one, go ahead. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I ask that we adjourn in the name of Delphina Mrs. Reynaga was 77 years old. She'd been a resident of Torrance for 52 years. Her son and daughter-in-law were personal friends of mine, and she passed away on January 18, 2001, after a long struggle with cancer. She survived by her husband, Diolito, five children, and 17 grandchildren. And I just ask that we adjourn today's meeting in her name.
Mr. Wax.
Well, I noticed in the paper today that Fred Schnell had passed away, and I think all members should. That was a bold move at the time, this is back in the early '70s, when Tom Bradley brought in a giant really from the outside world to help him in dealing with the business community and the climate of improving the economy. And he served first on loan from, I think, Transamerica at the time, and then he stayed on with Tom and served the city well for many, many years, and I think all members should join in that. And I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of Fred Hughes, who is a friend of mine, who was the executor of the Andy Warhol estate and helped the decision that all of Andy's assets be left to a trust and a foundation to further the visual arts in this country. And I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
And I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Bessie Jolly Taylor, constituent CD6. Call the roll.
Before you close the --
Oh, sorry.
Plumb Committee will meet in five minutes.
Oh, sorry. Hang on, we have one more. On behalf of Mr. Farrar, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Pinky Beatrice Clayton, who passed away last Monday. We may all want to join this. She was the mother of Janet Clayton of the LA Times.
All members.
She survived by Janet and another daughter. And I apologize, I didn't see that until right now. Okay, finish calling the roll. Thank you, we are adjourned. See you on tomorrow.